Good evening. Welcome to our third session of the study of Acts of the Apostles. I'm glad you've joined us. And from what I'm getting regarding the statistics of these videos, people are listening from various parts of the country, so I thank God for that. May I suggest that you invite your friends, relatives, fellow church members, neighbors, and others to join in the study? If you're enjoying the studies, give me a thumbs up below, will you? And if you'd like to continue the study, go ahead and hit that subscribe button below as well. Now, as I'm sure you realize by now, these studies are pre-recorded. There's some advantage to that. First, you can listen to the studies anytime you want. Second, you can listen to them repeatedly. And third, you can stop the video at any time and resume the video at any time. Now, it occurs to me that as you are studying with me, you may have questions or comments. So let me invite you to stop the video at any point and type in your question or comment on the area below. I'll receive the video periodically, I'll review the video periodically, and if I know you, I will answer your question by way of email. If not, I will simply answer your question or comment below, and I believe YouTube will notify you if you have a response from me. All right, as we begin our study together tonight, let's invite the Holy Spirit to be our teacher. Our Father in Heaven, we are discovering that this great book, the Book of Acts, is an extraordinary book, and far more important than we've ever realized. So we ask you to give us insights into the text we are looking at tonight. Help us to see how critically important these four verses of the Bible really are. Help us to see the relevancy for the church today in general, and for our own lives in particular. We ask you, oh Lord, to continue to pour out your Spirit on the church today, including us. Fill us with your power. Help us to know your presence, and above all, help us to be witnesses of Jesus in our Jerusalem, our Judea, our Samaria, and to the uttermost parts of the earth. Begin again what you began on that day of Pentecost more than 2,000 years ago, and fulfill the mission of reaching the entire world for the gospel. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen. After Jesus' ascension, the disciples headed back to Jerusalem to wait for the Holy Spirit, which Jesus promised to give them. In fact, He commanded them to not leave Jerusalem until that promise had been fulfilled in their lives. So they returned to the city and entered a room in the upper level of the temple. We know a little bit about the early group that was gathered there. It consisted of the eleven disciples, a man named Joseph, who was called Barzabas, another man whose name was Matthias, some of Jesus' brothers, if not all of them, Mary, Jesus' mother, and some other women. My guess is that there was probably over twenty people in that original group. Now, we're not sure when Peter stood up and led the men in the replacement of Judas Iscariot, the man whose name was Matthias, we looked at that passage last week. But we do know that at that time, the crowd had grown to about 120 people. In our study last week, we looked at what the disciples and the other believers did during the week they spent in that upper room. They prayed, they worshiped, they surrendered themselves to Christ in ways they had never surrendered themselves to Him before. They replaced Judas Iscariot with Matthias, and they must have had tremendous fellowship together as they thought about the influence that Jesus had on their lives, and how they anticipated the ministry to which He had called them. One of the most well-known pastors in Southern California when I lived there was a man whose name was Lloyd Ogilvy. Dr. Ogilvy was the pastor of the Hollywood Presbyterian Church. He ended his career by becoming the chaplain of the United States Senate. In his book, Drumbeat of Love, he connects Jesus' life, death, and resurrection with the outpouring of the Holy Spirit by using the analogy of lightning and thunder. Jesus' life, death, and resurrection is the lightning, and the outpouring of the Holy Spirit is the thunder. So tonight, we're going to be looking at chapter two, verses one through four, which is the third section of this first unit of the Book of Acts. You remember that we said that the first unit is chapter one, verse one, all the way to chapter two, verse four? We looked at the first two sections of that unit in our last two studies. Tonight, we're looking at the third one. So let's look at verse one of this second chapter. My Bible translates this verse this way. "When the day of Pentecost had come, they were all together in one place." The King James Version of this verse says, "And when the day of Pentecost was fully come, they were all with one accord in one place." Now, that's getting to where I think the translation ought to be, because I think there's another translation that's possible that is more fitting to the passage we're looking at. I would translate it like this. "And when the day of Pentecost was being fulfilled, they were all together in one place." Now, why do I translate it like that? Well, I do so because it is no mystery that the coming of the Messiah and His Holy Spirit was foretold for us in the feasts of the Old Testament. For example, the lamb that was offered in sacrifice during the Passover was fulfilled in Jesus. The Old Testament lamb was only a symbol. Jesus is the reality. That's why John the Baptist said of Jesus, "Behold, the Lamb of God who takes away the sins of the world." And so, it is here on this feast of Pentecost, it is a feast being fulfilled. This holy day was called Pentecost because it occurred on the fiftieth day after Passover. Penta means five or fifty, depending on the context in which it is used. It was also known as the Feast of Weeks and the Day of the First Fruits. In other words, it was a day of celebrating the harvest. The people brought a portion of their harvest, particularly of wheat, to God. Now, as we shall see, during this great day, a great harvest of souls were brought into the kingdom of God as a result of the outpouring of the Holy Spirit in the proclamation of the Gospels for the Apostle Peter. We'll come to that next week. Now, there's something else about this feast that is significant. Tradition said that Moses received the Ten Commandments, the law, on the fiftieth day after that first Passover, way back in the Book of Exodus, which resulted in Israel's escape from Egyptian slavery. Those Ten Commandments were the essence of the old covenant. But in Jeremiah, chapter thirty-one, verses thirty-one to thirty-four, we have a promise. It is a promise of a new covenant. Let me read those verses to you. "The days are surely coming," says the Lord, "when I will make a new covenant with the house of Israel and the house of Judah. It will not be like the covenant that I made with her ancestors, or their ancestors, when I took them by the hand to bring them out of the land of Egypt, a covenant that they broke, though I was their husband," says the Lord. "But this is the covenant that I will make with the house of Israel after those days," says the Lord. "I will put my law within them, and I will write it on their hearts; and I will be their God, and they shall be my people." Now, if you asked an average Jew in those days what is meant by the law, that person might give you one of two or three answers. A person might define the law as the Ten Commandments. That would be the core of the core of law. Or a person might define the law as the first five books of the Old Testament: Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, and Deuteronomy. Sometimes we call these books the Pentateuch. As we indicated earlier, penta means five or fifty, depending on the context. In this case, it means five. Those five books traditionally were books written by Moses, so that was the law. But later in Israel's history, a Jew might define the law as the entire Old Testament. So if the law is the Ten Commandments, or the first five books of the Old Testament, or the entire Old Testament, what did God mean when He spoke to the prophet and said, "I will write the law on their hearts"? Did that mean that a person would wake up one morning and find that he suddenly had memorized all the Ten Commandments, or all the first five books of the Old Testament, or all the Old Testament? I don't think so. So what did God mean? Well, that question puzzled me for quite some time, but then I remembered the question that one of the scribes asked Jesus. He said to him, "Which commandment is first of all?" And Jesus replied, "The first is, 'Here, O Israel, the Lord our God is one; you shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul, with all your mind, and with all your strength.' And the second is this: 'You shall love your neighbor as yourself.'" But notice what Jesus said right after He quoted those two commandments. He said, "On these two commandments hang all the law and the prophets." What was He saying? He was saying that you could sum up the entire law with these two commandments. That's why they're called Great Commandments, and they're commandments about love. So what does this have to do with the outpouring of the Holy Spirit on the day of Pentecost? It has much to do, because when the Holy Spirit was poured out, the believers were baptized not only in power, but in love. Love for God and love for people. The perfect law of love is written on our hearts when we are filled with the Holy Spirit. We wake to realize that we have an indescribable love for God, and an equally indescribable love for others, including our former enemies. All right, I'm a bit ahead of myself here, so let's return to the day of Pentecost. It was being fulfilled. That is to say, a great harvest was about to be reaped for the kingdom, just as the Israelites had reaped a harvest of their crops and brought part of that harvest to the Lord in the tabernacle in the old days, or the temple more recently. And the day of Pentecost was being fulfilled, and that the law was once given, but was once again being given, but not on tablets of stone. Rather, it was being written on the hearts of the people as they were filled with the Spirit. Now, before we look at what happened to those believers in detail, I want to point out that what happened to them was nothing less than what had happened to Jesus Himself when He began His public ministry and presented Himself to John the Baptist for baptism at the river Jordan. When you study Jesus' baptism, you must ask yourself, "Why did Jesus need to be baptized?" I mean, He wasn't a sinner like us. He didn't need to repent. Not only do we need to ask that question, but the fact is, John the Baptist Himself asked that question. When Jesus presented Himself to John the Baptist for baptism, John objected and said to Jesus, "You come to me to be baptized? I need to be baptized by you." But Jesus replied, "Let it be for now to fulfill all righteousness." Now, I want to make a very important statement here. Jesus was baptized in order to identify with sinful people, because He knew that the end of His ministry, He would be taking upon Himself the sins of the world and paying for them on the cross. So He was identifying with sinful people, in essence, becoming a sinner, not by committing sins, but by taking upon Himself human sin. The Bible says that Jesus became sin for us, that we might become the righteousness of God in Christ. Now, that raises this question. Why are we baptized? When a person is baptized, if he is baptized by immersion, usually he is taken down into the water and lifted up again. Sometimes it is done once, sometimes it is done three times, in the name of the Father, in the name of the Son, and in the name of the Holy Spirit. And we say that when we are baptized, we go down into the water identifying with Jesus' death, and we come up out of the water identifying with Jesus' resurrection. All well and good, we die with Him, we are raised with Him. But I'm now convinced it's much more than that. At Jesus' baptism in water, He also received the Holy Spirit. Only when He received the Holy Spirit was He able to perform signs and wonders, miracles, to verify the truthfulness of His ministry and His message, and to minister to the needs of people. So when we are baptized in the Holy Spirit, as He was baptized in the Holy Spirit, we are able to bear witness of Christ not only by word, but by deed, by miraculous deed. That is what the Book of Acts is all about, as we shall see. It is how Jesus raised up an army of believers who were able to go out into the world and do the things that He did while proclaiming His word. All right then, let's look at what happened on that day of Pentecost in some detail. They had been in the upper room for one week. How do we know that? Well, there were fifty days between Passover and Pentecost. Jesus had arisen on the third day, leaving forty-seven more days until Pentecost, and Jesus had appeared to the disciples over a period of forty days before His ascension. That left seven days between His ascension and the day of Pentecost. Now, the text says that suddenly, from heaven, there came a sound like the rush of a violent wind. Now, notice something about the wind. It wasn't a wind. It was only the sound like the rush of a violent wind. In other words, this was not something physical, or material, or earthly, or worldly. Rather, it was something spiritual, heavenly. It's not surprising that the word for wind, or breath, and spirit is the same both in Hebrew and in Greek. In Greek, it is the word Noah, or sometimes we use the word numna. It is the word from which we get the word pneumonia. What is pneumonia? It is an affliction of the lungs, a breathing, breath, wind. In the Gospel of John, we read that Jesus breathed on them, that is, on His disciples, and said to them, "Receive the Holy Spirit." "So the sound of the wind filled the entire house or room where they were sitting." So that was a sign that something of the breath of God, the Spirit of God, was coming on the people. Then in verse three, we read that "divided tongues as a fire appeared among them, and a tongue rested on each of them." Now, take note of this. It's very important. The tongues of fire can mean at least two things. First, you'll remember that when the Israelites traveled through the wilderness on their way to the Promised Land, during the day, they were led by a cloud, and we saw last week that a cloud implies quite often the presence of God, and during the night, they were led by a pillar of fire. So in that case, the fire represented the presence of the Spirit to guide the Israelites through the wilderness. Keep that in mind. Then, second, fire is often a symbol of purity or undergoing purification in the Old Testament. Many of the sacred objects were burned before they could be used in the Old Testament. So the presence of fire here would refer to the sanctifying work of the Holy Spirit to purify these believers. Now, if we were to go into a list of the ways the Holy Spirit purified those believers, and purifies us, we would be here all night. We might say that they were purified in their motives, purified in their desires, and purified in their love. So the presence of the Holy Spirit gave them two things: the promise of guidance by the Holy Spirit, and the promise of purification or sanctification by the Holy Spirit. Notice something else about these tongues of fire. An individual tongue rested on each one of them. What does that tell us? Well, it tells us that the experience of being filled with the Spirit is not a collective experience, it is an individual experience. In this case, all the believers were filled with the Holy Spirit, because each one of those believers had an individual tongue resting upon him or her. Now, that's not always the case. Two people may be standing in a church, and one experiences the filling of the Holy Spirit while the other does not. So this is an important issue for all of us. Have you received the Holy Spirit? Paul asked that question to the Ephesian believers in Acts, chapter nineteen. Did you receive the Holy Spirit when you believed? It's an individual thing. All right, what happened next? Verse four. "All them were filled with the Holy Spirit." What does that mean? Well, knowing what I now know, I believe these words require a literalness that we don't always give them. In other words, the Holy Spirit came to live inside their bodies, and they were literally filled with the Holy Spirit in their bodies, the third person of the Trinity. Do you know, Apostle Paul asked the Corinthian believers, that your bodies are temples of the Holy Spirit? So in some mysterious way, the Holy Spirit came to reside in them, and in the same mysterious way, He comes to reside in all believers today. Next, verse four tells us that they began to speak in other languages as the Spirit gave them the ability. Now, this is probably the most controversial part of the whole story. It is a part that has raised more debate and disagreement than anything else in these four verses. "They spoke in other tongues. They spoke in other tongues as the Spirit gave them the ability." This was a spontaneous eruption of the Holy Spirit that was so powerful, it resulted in a language being spoken that none of the believers had ever learned. So let's be careful about this. They all spoke in tongues, and no one taught them how to speak in tongues. I attended the most prominent charismatic university in the United States, Oral Roberts University. At that time, Oral Roberts was not only still alive, but he was still teaching. He taught a class to all the students who attended the university. His class was titled, "The Holy Spirit in the Now." Attendance was mandatory. The class was a good class, and I probably should have paid closer attention to it than I did. But one thing offended me, and that is that Oral Roberts tried to teach the people how to speak in tongues, all of his students. Now, he did that because he had a fundamental belief that everybody who is filled with the Holy Spirit speaks in tongues. So if you don't speak in tongues, there's something wrong. So he tried to teach the students how to speak in tongues. But when he did that, I thought to myself, "Who taught Peter and the other believers how to speak in tongues? Who taught the Apostle Paul how to speak in tongues?" It would seem to me that if a person was taught how to speak in tongues, he would never know if what he was speaking was a genuine manifestation of the Spirit of God, or it was a counterfeit, something that came from the flesh. No one taught any of the believers in the New Testament how to speak in tongues. I don't, I think it's a mistake to try to do so. Now, I don't want to get into a full teaching on the gift of speaking in tongues, but I do want to clarify some things about this passage. So let me just say a few things. As you read the New Testament, you will find that there is not one kind of speaking in tongues, but actually, three kinds. In the case of these believers in Acts, chapter two, they spoke in languages, well-known languages of the people who were visiting Jerusalem to celebrate Pentecost. So the tongues were known languages, very important. They were not languages that these believers had learned. That's what made them miraculous. In fact, these people who were speaking tongues, most of them were Galileans, and you could tell they were Galileans by the clothing they wore, and probably by the accent of their language. So they were known to be Galileans, and Galileans were not very educated people. So here they were, speaking in these languages that they had never learned, and that was a miracle to those who heard them. The second kind of tongue you will find in the New Testament is the kind of tongue that needs interpretation by someone who has that gift, the gift of interpretation. This is the gift of tongues that is used in a group of believers, usually not used in a public gathering where there are unbelievers present, and it is meant to give a specific word from God through the interpretation of the tongue by a person who did not give the tongue. In other words, the person who gave the tongue does not interpret his own tongue. Someone else interprets it for him. In this case, the word spoken in the tongue may or may not be in a language we know on earth. We would call it a heavenly language. And then, a third kind of tongue is what we might call a prayer language. This is a tongue where people pray in the Spirit. That is to say, as they're praying privately, they're praying in tongues. The Apostle Paul wrote, "I will pray in the Spirit, and I will pray with the understanding. I will sing in the Spirit, I will sing with the understanding." Now, there's one other point regarding the speaking in tongues that I would like to make. When the believers burst out of that room, that upper room on the temple grounds, immediately after they were filled with the Holy Spirit, they were not silent. What were they doing? They were speaking praises to God and praises about God, so that the ministry they began began the time of worship. Now, we talked about worship in our last session. As the disciples waited throughout that week for the promise of the Holy Spirit to be fulfilled, they prayed, but they also worshiped because of what they had experienced of the risen Christ in their lives, and what they had experienced of the Holy Spirit in their lives. So here they were, once again praising God, but in a way that they had never experienced before. I mean, this was miles above what they had experienced even during that week in the upper room. And that praise of God served as a catalyst for the first act of ministry of the church, the Apostle Peter's first sermon. All right, there's one more question I need to answer before we end this lesson that has to do with tongues, and it is the most divisive question when it comes to this gift of tongues. Do you have to speak in tongues to be filled with the Holy Spirit? Now, if you ask the Pentecostals who believe these gifts are still present today, most of them would say, "Yes, you do." But not all of them, and there is a growing number of people who would not label themselves as Pentecostals, who would also say, "No, you need not speak in tongues to be filled with the Spirit." However, and by the way, I agree with it. However, I would also add that I believe the gift of tongues is available to all believers. I cannot imagine that the Holy Spirit would withhold that gift from anyone in the church. Now, you may not agree with me, and that's okay. We don't have to agree in all of these details. All right, let me begin to draw this lesson to a close by talking about the biblical vocabulary of the spirit-filled life. In the Bible, you will find different words that are used to describe the relationship between a believer and the Holy Spirit. Sometimes you will read that a person was filled with the Spirit. Other times, you will read that a person was baptized in the Spirit, and then other times, you will read that a person received the Spirit. Now, some misguided people have tried to make three distinct experiences from these three phrases. They will tell you that there is a difference between being filled with the Holy Spirit, being baptized in the Holy Spirit, and receiving the Spirit. I believe that's nonsense. These three statements refer to one experience from three different perspectives. When you are baptized with the Spirit, that is what Jesus does to you. He is the baptizer with the Holy Spirit. John the Baptist said, "I baptize you with water, but He will baptize you with the Holy Spirit." When you receive the Holy Spirit, that is what you do when Jesus baptizes you in the Holy Spirit. And when you are filled with the Holy Spirit, that is simply what happens to you when you receive the Holy Spirit and when Jesus baptizes you in the Holy Spirit. Three different phrases, all referring to the same experience. Now, one final question. Why does Luke give us such detail regarding the outpouring of the Holy Spirit in the city of Jerusalem on this day of Pentecost? Well, we will answer that question when we study the tenth chapter of this book. in which we read the story of the Gentile Pentecost. Why is that important? Because Luke wants us to see that the outpouring of the Holy Spirit on the Gentile community is as legitimate as the outpouring of the Holy Spirit on the Jewish community. And he will do that by showing the remarkable similarities between the experiences of these two groups. All right then. Just as we asked the question, "How does this material prepare the believers for ministry?" In our last two studies, let's ask the question, "How does this experience prepare the believers for ministry?" First, let's not forget, Jesus promised to his disciples before he ascended to heaven. He said to them, "You shall receive power, the Holy Spirit coming upon you, and you shall be my witnesses." So then, these believers were now endued with power from on high, and they would use that power to be witnesses of Christ and draw multitudes to him. If you look at the massive evangelism going on around the world today, you will soon realize that there was a connection between the Holy Spirit and that unbelievable evangelism, where millions of people are coming to Christ. Second, from our brief study about the law being written on the heart, we know that these believers were immersed in love. Love for God and love for people, believers and unbelievers alike. It's very difficult to carry on ministry to people if you don't love them. Third, the coming of the Holy Spirit resulted in a purification of these people. Purification of their hearts, purification of their minds, purification of their motives, on and on we could go. Fourth, with the presence of the Holy Spirit in their lives, they need not carry on their ministry blindly. Just as the pillar of fire led the Israelites through the wilderness, so the Holy Spirit would guide the believers individually throughout their lives as they lived in the kingdom of God and ministered in the world. There are some who maintain that this guidance of the Spirit is primary for experiencing the Word of God in the world today. When you hear the Holy Spirit, you're hearing the Word of God. Fifth, with the gift of speaking in tongues, they had their first tool available to them at the outset that would enable them to bear witness of Christ to all the people who were in Jerusalem that day, regardless of the language those people spoke. The Holy Spirit enabled and guided that ministry. So the church was born. It was filled with light. It was filled with life, and was filled with love. It was filled with power, the same power which had raised Jesus from the dead, the same power with which the Father had created the entire universe way back there in Genesis, chapter one. The coming of the Holy Spirit on Pentecost was like a spiritual nuclear explosion, a billion times greater than any nuclear bomb any country has ever exploded. And to think that this power resides in you and me is mind-boggling. All right, that's our study for this week. I'm sure you may want to replay this video because there is so much in this passage, these just four short verses of the Bible. So much here that is vital for the church today. Now, as you pray, do this. This is really what this lesson is all about. Ask Jesus to fill you with his Holy Spirit. And if you are filled with his Spirit, then ask him to give you more. More of his power, more of his love, more of his wisdom, more of his guidance, more of his presence in your life. May he bless you abundantly beyond anything you could ever ask or think. Amen. God bless you.